Morning, it's ten o'clock. That's the time that was noticed in post regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. It's Tuesday, April the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. It's ten o'clock A.M. We're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room lobby lane busy. Pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh-two page, the public will have physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would stand please and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of the Constitution and the Constitution and our government. Thank you very much. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. And the board may vote to recess to go into executive session for the purpose of retaining legal advice from the board's attorney at any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh-three A three. And we begin with the roll call. District one?
Crosby is here.
Uh, District two supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Chad is present.
We have a complete board this morning. Members of the public may attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling six oh-two, six oh-nine, seven-five-one-three, or eight-eight-eight-six-eight-zero-six-seven-one-four. Conference ID three-nine-two-two-eight-six-two-seven-four pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five-two-zero-four-three-two-nine-two-zero-zero for direction. The board may permit public comment during this discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda adding or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. Note that some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. And this means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And we begin with the call to the public. Uh, the first person is on teams. Uh, Teresa Jaredette, are you available?
Yes, I am. Good morning supervisors.
A little louder please, Tricia.
Okay, sorry, let me get my notes out here. Okay, um, we had a successful jail district vote. We had a successful P P E vote and tally. We've just had the Supreme Court of the United States reject the Fincham Lake appeal on the use of voting machines. The original Fincham Lake lawsuit was rejected due to what the judge called a long chain of hypothetical contingencies. And they pellet judges called speculation. So I'm wondering if we can look forward to an uneventful canvas of the remaining elections in two thousand and twenty-four in Cochise County. Will the supervisors commit now to accepting the results if the county elections director certifies the results to them? Thank you.
All right, next on teams, we have Allison Morris. Are you there Allison? Allison, are you available?
Yes, I'm I'm here. I'm sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Good morning. I'm Allison Morris, a registered voter from Portal, and I am grateful for this opportunity to speak today. I just have two unrelated items that I'd like to address. First, I would very much like to thank the Public Works and Highway Department for coming out to Portal. Residents here really appreciate the recent grading of Foothills Road and taking care of the potholes on Portal Road and in town. These roads were in pretty rough shape, so it's it's really nice to have the work done. So thank you very much to the crew responsible for these improvements. I did, excuse me, I did leave a message with that department, but I just wasn't sure if they got it, because I didn't get anything back, so that's fine. I just wanted to say thank you. But on a completely different matter, I just would like to mention that the links on the elections page for the past election results have not been working for over a week. And I've accessed that information without trouble many times in the past. And I'm told that the that the problem is being investigated. I'd just like to suggest that when something like that happens and part of the county's website becomes disabled, it would be really helpful for the website users like myself to have something posted perhaps on the county's news and announcement page. I was told that it was posted on social media, which is great, but not not everyone uses social media. And the website is where the problem exists, so it would make sense, to me anyway, that that's where the message would be. I do understand that the department is going through another transition, and I'm sure there's a lot going on there. I really, I really am sympathetic. I just hope that all the links and the information will be available to the public soon. Thank you.
Uh, next is Johnny Wilson in person.
Johnny Wilson Sierra Vista, Arizona. This is my day in the barrel. Anyway, I can remember, I'm old enough to remember when we used to, it was illegal to break the law. And I pled allegiance to the flag. I honor the flag and I do my best to do it, to follow the republic for which it stands, which means it's we the people that control the government. It's not the government controlling us. I even wrote some notes down this time. I want you to know that you set a precedent that we don't really have to follow the laws anymore because you don't follow the Constitution. And I guess some people are scared to stand up for our Constitution and our country. And I can understand that if you get people get threatened, people get bought off with money. And I'm not saying you guys are, you guys are. I'm just saying this happened. You watch it on the news every day. And uh, and I'm really upset that Biden won't close the border. I have a personal grudge. I have a nephew that was taken in front of his wife and his children screaming. I hope I don't get emotional. Mistaken identity, they took him out, tied him up, shot him in the back of the head. Killed him. So we need to close our border. It just and they just got to impeach in my work is because he doesn't want to close the border. And I don't know how many of you remember her name, Lakin Riley? President Biden wouldn't even say her name at the State of the Union. Well, guess what my org is just did about four days ago? He let this guy out on parole illegally. So now we have another murderer running around. So I don't want that to happen here in Cochise County. I want to feel safe. There are days that I don't feel safe. But there's so many people that don't even know that things are going on because they just live their lives, and I don't blame them for that. I used to never follow politics. You know, and uh, it's just, I don't know. You know, Biden gets these secret dockets and they say, well, he can't stand trial because he's not capable, but yet he has his finger on the nuclear button. I mean, some of this stuff our government is doing is crazy. I don't know. Like yesterday, about two days ago, he said his uncle was eaten by cannibals. The guy is, he's nuts. The FBI, yeah.
Good times, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda, we have the consent agenda, items one through eight. Could I have a motion please?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve consent agenda items one through eight.
Can I hear a second? Then I will second the motion. So we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. I'm going to um, take a little privilege here before we do the public hearings because we have someone special in our audience today. With item number twelve and that's Dr. Rottweiler, who is the president of Cochise College. And I believe that you have some of your staff with you today. Dr. Rottweiler, would you stand and introduce them to the public please?
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. I have my executive assistant Crystal Wheeler, our executive dean of community engagement that Dr. Jennifer wants, and our public information officer, Shuini Hukin.
Thank you. Well, um, today is important. This is Community College Month. And we have it on the agenda later and we will have to approve it on the agenda or not. But so for um, the public, I think it's important that we read the proclamation so that they understand that we as the Board of Supervisors support education as the the way to to have a better life for all of us. So this is the proclamation for Cochise County Community College Month. Whereas Arizona's community colleges have played a vital role in shaping the future of the state and its economy through providing high-quality education and training to students of all backgrounds and ages. And whereas Arizona's ten community college districts provide academic and workforce opportunities to students in sixty-one locations with additional online learning options, are committed to providing accessible, affordable, high-quality education and training to their respective communities. And whereas Arizona's community colleges offer a wide range of programs and services, including technical training, transfer degrees, workforce development, early college experience, and adult education, all designed to meet the needs of students and employers alike. And whereas Arizona's community colleges serve over two hundred and fifty thousand students each year, providing them with the skills and knowledge needed to pursue their academic and professional goals and to become active and engaged members of their communities. And whereas the community colleges are an integral part of the state's economy, providing employers with the skilled workforce that's essential to the growth and prosperity of Arizona's businesses and industries. And whereas the community colleges are playing an important role in meeting the state's attainment goal, Achieve Sixty Arizona, by helping more students and working adults attain a license, a credential, or a degree. And whereas with recognition of the dedication and hard work of the faculty, staff, and leadership of Arizona's community colleges in providing excellent education and training to students and acknowledgement of the vital role they play in helping build a stronger and more prosperous Arizona. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Cochise County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April two thousand and twenty-four as Cochise County Community College Month. So if you would stand and we could give you some applause for that. Did you want to make a comment?
Madam Chair, Madam Chairman of the Board, thank you so much for this recognition. Cochise College is extremely proud to serve all of Cochise County. Our official name is Cochise County Community College District. Community is in our middle name. And we've worked really, really hard during the last fifty-nine years to really provide educational services clear across the county to all of our communities. Uh, on September twenty-first of this year, we will celebrate sixty years of providing educational services. And in nineteen sixty-four, when we opened our doors on the Douglas campus, we opened it to four hundred and forty-one students. Uh, in September of two thousand and twenty-four, I will uh, I will bet that we will have well over ten thousand students. We've served ten thousand students the last three or four years. And so I think that vision that the early founders had of providing educational opportunities here in our county for our local citizens has really borne fruit. And so we appreciate this recognition and and we're so proud to partner not only with the Board of Supervisors, but all of Cochise County, uh, the Sheriff's Office, the uh, all of the various entities within the county government, as well as city government, our various chambers of commerce. We're proud to partner together and we hope we're making a difference and really enhancing the quality of life for all of our citizens. So thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Particularly important or I guess meaningful to me because the uh, the college was started the first year I was teaching in Cochise County. So it's it's really a remembrance that I have of the growth and change in Cochise College over the years that you've been available. So thank you very much. All right, now we move on to the agenda items, which are public hearings to begin with. Um, number nine?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve series ten Beer and Wine New Liquor License Application submitted by Francisco Romero for Dollar General Store number twenty-four, seven fifty-five, located at fifty-five eighty-four South Santa Elena Avenue, Sierra Vista, eight-five-six-five-zero.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I will open the public hearing so that you can give us information, Laura.
Madam Chair, members of the board, this item is for a new series ten liquor license submitted by Francisco Romero for Dollar General Store number two-four-seven-five-five in Sierra Vista. The application has been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protests were received. The applicant has paid the one hundred dollar processing fee and board staff is recommending approval.
I I have no notice that anyone from the public wishes to speak, but I will open it to the public in case anyone wants to speak for or against this issue. During none, I will close the public hearing. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. We go to the next public hearing, uh, which is to adopt zoning ordinance. Could I have a motion please?
Madam Chair, I move we adopt zoning ordinance twenty-four dash oh-five to rezone tax parcel one oh-four dash one-two dash zero one-six from RU two rural district, one dwelling per two acres to RU four rural district, one dwelling per four acres pursuant to the application of Wesley and Marinatha Jackson.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Tinger, would you give us some information on this property?
Madam Chair and board members, this is the staff presentation for docket RZ twenty-four zero-four Valley Vista Estates. The requested rezone is from RU two to RU four. The applicants are Wesley and Marinatha Jackson. The location is at the northeast corner of Highway ninety-two and Valley Vista Drive. Again, the current zoning is RU two, the proposed zoning is RU four. Um, property is located within growth area D with a planned designation of rural. Existing use is undeveloped, the proposed use is a single-family residence. Uh, property is located approximately five miles south of Sierra Vista, west of our location. Uh, property again is at the southeast corner of Highway ninety-two, excuse me, northeast corner of Highway ninety-two in Valley Vista Drive, showing the surrounding residential zoning and residential development pattern. The measures of the property, again, it's undeveloped, showing its location along Highway ninety-two as well as Valley Vista, Valley View. Again, the property's location, it's undeveloped, showing the predominantly residential development pattern in the area. Concept plan provided by the applicant shows a single-family residence proposed. Uh, staff, uh, between twenty and twenty-two March of this year, staff uh, mailed notices posted to the property and published legal advertisement. Staff has received three responses in favor from property owners within three hundred feet. Thirteen notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet. Um, as proposed, the uh, application complies with ten of ten applicable factors used to evaluate rezoning applications. Factors in favor again complies with ten applicable factors. The proposed use is compatible with the existing residential growth pattern. Uh, downzone reduces the numbers of allowed principal dwellings. Staff has not received any opposition from nearby property owners. Uh, no uh, factors against approval have been identified by staff. Madam Chair, uh, the recommendation based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of docket RZ two-four-zero-four without conditions by vote of seven to zero at their April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. And based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of docket RZ twenty-four zero-four, rezoning parcel one zero four one-two zero one-six from RU two to RU four without conditions. And Madam Chair, that concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any of your questions and the applicant is present.
Do you have any questions before I open the public hearing?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Not at this time. Thank you, madam.
I'll open the public hearing. I, let me check. I do have one on item number two. Open the public hearing on this issue. I believe it says this is item number ten, but I think they're talking about item number eleven. So, um, I think there's been a mistake made here. Al Anderson, if you are available and you wanted to speak on this issue, was it item number ten or item number eleven? It's marked ten on the
I have item number eleven, ma'am.
Okay, I thought it looked like what you were going to talk about. So I do not have anyone. Is there anyone in the public here who wishes to speak for or against this issue? Hearing none, seeing none, and I'll close the public hearing. And we do have a motion and a second on the floor. So is there any discussion from the board before I call for the vote?
No, ma'am.
Not at this time, madam.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Uh, item number eleven. Uh, could I have a motion please?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt resolution twenty-four dash oh-six to amend the Naco area plan, a component of the Cochise County Comprehensive Plan, changing the land use designation of a hundred and seventy-five acres from recreational open space and business to Camp Riff Master Development Plan and adopt zoning ordinance twenty-four oh-six to rezone tax parcels one oh-two dash fifty-five dash zero zero-two and one oh-two dash fifty-five dash zero zero-five from RU four rural district, one dwelling per four acres and R thirty-six residential district, one dwelling per thirty-six thousand square feet to P D Planned Development District.
Second.
Madam Chair and board members, uh, this is the staff presentation for dockets MDP twenty-four zero-one and RZ twenty-four zero-five, which is the Camp Riff MDP. Uh, the applicant is Savannah McDonald. The property is located at seventeen ninety-four West Newell Street. The requested amendment is from business and recreational open space to MDP four hundred and seventy-five acres and the zoning amendment from rural and residential to planned development district. Previous use was golf course, RV park, lounge and restaurant, and proposed uses for mixed use. Uh, property is located mainly south of our location in Naco. Uh, identifies the property's location in relation to surrounding development as well as zoning districts, showing a predominantly residential zoning district and development pattern. The Naco area plan again identifies the subject parcels with two classifications. One is recreational open space. The other is for business. Uh, it's important to note that the Naco area plan has, it's a very short plan that was identified, excuse me, adopted in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, some of the major takeaways in the plan are to preserve Naco's unique histories of order town, also to preserve existing neighborhoods, particularly those in the old townsite area, as well as to promote new opportunities for economic development through infill projects or redevelopment projects. Views of the property uh, during the time that staff posted the property, some additional views showing the chain link fence in the foreground. Uh, Newell Street viewing east and west. Some drone imagery, uh, this shows the existing buildings on the structure on the property. Uh, this is viewing approximately northwest, uh, and to note that these these photos were actually taken during a previous docket, although the property conditions have not changed. Again, viewing west, viewing east with uh, Newell to the right, and also viewing approximately east northeast with some adjacent residents and the foreground residences. The applicant has provided an MDP, um, showing the mixed use project, which consists of RV hookups as well as dry campsites and some additional amenities. A rendering is required by the zoning regulations, again showing what the project is anticipated to look like, look like at buildout, and this would be viewing north. So in summary, uh, project site is about a hundred and seventy-five acres, uh, three hundred and seventy-seven dry campsites and a hundred and forty-four RV hookups. Uh, bath and shower facilities, uh, additional event space, wedding pavilion with a one hundred and fifty to two hundred uh, capacity, five hundred seat amphitheater, and additional amenities, including a walking path, uh, playgrounds, swimming pool, community garden. Um, the economic summary provided by the applicant is a to their project, uh, to their packet, uh, identifies a thirty-five million dollar anticipated project, um, investment, a five-year phase development, uh, estimated buildout is in two thousand and thirty, estimate job creation, it could be up to sixty-five and a fourteen million dollar estimated economic impact. Uh, one of the requirements of the MDP process is the adequate facilities as far as utilities go. Um, we've received confirmation from both the tobacco sanitary district as well as Harston Water that they have the resources available to support the project. API, the property is also loaded, located within APS Southwest Gas and CenturyLink service areas. Um, as proposed, the request complies with the majority thirteen of fifteen resulting factors. Uh, it's important to note infill compatibility only applies to commercial and industrial rezoning requests. Um, and the applicant, we're not proposing any hazardous materials with the project. So for the master development plan, um, docket MDP twenty-four zero-one, um, the MDP and PD applications meet some other requirements of the zoning regulations. Uh, because the request is consistent with a Naco area plan for infill, uh, development and economic growth opportunities. Again, it complies with thirteen of fifteen resulting factors. Uh, staff has received numerous uh, responses in favor of the project. Factors against MDP approval would be opposition from nearby property owners. Significant opposition has been received. Uh, proposed uses are more intense than previous uses, generating, potentially generating increased noise and traffic. Rezoning factors in favor again complies with thirteen applicable factors, support from nearby property owners, uh, factors against opposition from nearby property owners. So the applicant, um, and property owner had a neighborhood meeting on three February. They actually overnoticed, um, the requirement for an MDP is one thousand foot notification area that comes out of the comprehensive plan. Um, the applicant applicant sent over three hundred and thirty open house invitations to property owners within Naco. Uh, and then staff followed that up between nineteen and twenty-two March, um, mailing notices, posting the property and publish legal advertisement. Um, staff mailed two hundred and thirty-one notices to property owners within a thousand feet of the property. Today, um, as of yesterday, staff has received eighteen responses in favor and twenty-one responses in opposition to this project. Madam Chair, recommendations for MDP twenty-four zero-one. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of docket MDP two-four-zero-one by vote of four to three at their April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Also based on the factors in favor of approval, staff also recommends approval of docket MDP two-four-zero-one, changing the land use designation of one hundred and seventy-five acres from recreational open space and business as identified in the Naco area plan to Camp Riff MDP. Staff's recommendations for docket RZ two-four-zero-five. Based on the factors in favor of approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of docket RZ two-four-zero-five, four to three at their April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Staff also recommends approval of this docket, rezoning parcels one zero-two-five-five and zero zero-two and one zero-two-five-five-zero-zero-five from RU four and RU R thirty-six to PD with the following conditions. Outdoor music shall end by eight P M. Monday through Thursday, midnight Friday and Saturday, ten P M. For amplified music on Fridays and Saturdays. At six P M. Sunday, existing gated access at Kettle Avenue shall not be accessible to the public. Uh, condition number three, incorporate the following five standards identified in the Naco area plan. Dedicate drainage ways to preserve native vegetation wildlife habitat. Ten ten-foot landscape buffers along abiding street. Vegetate parking lots with canopy trees. Stabilize green brush draw with existing or new drought tolerant vegetation. Ensure development harmonizes with surrounding nature through the use of setbacks, landscaping, screening, and natural terrain. And Madam Chair, that completes staff's presentation of dockets to MDP two-four-zero-one and RZ two-four-zero-five. Uh, we are available for your question, then the applicant, as well as property owner are in attendance.
Do any board members have any questions before I open the public hearing?
Madam Chair, uh, either now or after public speakers would be fine. I wonder if I, if our clerk can find page six of the public input and a bold italicized paragraph. And if that's possible, that would And if that's possible, that would be fine for the public to be able to look at that, but I'll just read what it says, which I'm sure our development partner, a department is, is familiar with. Grantee further agrees that should the real property be used other than exclusively for golf course purposes or if improvements of any kind other than directly and solely for golf course purposes are constructed or maintained thereon, title to the real property shall at grantor's option revert to grantor or its successors assigns or transferees. So I wonder if the development department could, could comment on that paragraph and if it is still in, well, what, what's the effect of it? What's a, what's effect of it to us since the date shown nineteen ninety-eight?
Right.
Sure, Madam Chair and Supervisors, the county was not a signator on any deed restrictions associated with the existing or continuing use of the golf course. This has been an issue that has been brought up by several members of the public that are concerned about the project. The property owner does, has, did provide some legal documentation to the department identifying that that was removed as a deed restriction. And I would defer to the applicant and property owner for further discussion on that issue.
Okay, so as I understand it, it is a civil issue and doesn't directly affect this decision today.
Madam Chair Supervisor Crosby, yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other question?
I brought up an extra question for me. So the grantor, then it sounds a little bit like it was a USDA grant or some sort of grant, block development grant to create the property. Or was that a granted by the county at some point? When it said grantor and they're taking that out, was that because it was built with public funds initially?
Madam Chair Supervisor Judd, the original agreement, I believe, was with the city of Bisbee. So there was some sort of a land transaction at that time to relocate the golf course from Warren to its current location. But as far as the grantor or grantee conversation, our understanding is that that provision no longer applies to this property.
And it didn't regard any funds? We, we had a park in my community that was similar to that where we had to, it was, it's a sports park and we had to make amends with state so that we could do things different with it or stick with our original plan from the seventies. So I wanted to make sure it wasn't that.
So the county wasn't, had no part in this conversation?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing and we do have some people who wish to speak on item number eleven. The first being Al Anderson, and you'll have three minutes, Al.
Thank you, Al Anderson Bisbee, Arizona. As a commercial property owner that benefits from tourism, I support the plan to construct Camp, Camp Riff. This project will benefit Bisbee and all of Cochise County and will have very little impact on the very few surrounding neighbors or traffic because it is on the edge of town with direct access to that highway. The camp will also provide a free shuttle bus to Bisbee and back, which will lower that route's traffic. Campgrounds are inherently quiet, but this upscale campground will have its own rules, plus any noise from the very occasional outdoor music events or movies will be strictly regulated by county ordinances. The camp's restaurant, event center and other amenities will give Cochise County new and much needed facilities, not to mention a huge boost to the county's tax base. There is a constant stream of tourists in RVs visiting our county, but there are very few places they can stay overnight. Eco-tourism in this county brings in twenty-eight million dollars a year and generates five hundred and ninety jobs. Camp Riff would add to that economy due to its proximity to important wildlife areas such as the San Pedro, Ramsey Canyon, Suffolk Springs Valley and Wildwater Drawl Wildlife Areas. None of those places provides sufficient designated camping areas, so Camp Riff will fill that need plus stop wildlife, wild cat camping and in a setting where campers can enjoy our beautiful night skies. This camp will draw tourists who will create a market for new restaurants and businesses that I hope will revitalize some of the boarded up buildings in downtown Naco. Fall and spring have normally been the only profitable months for Bisbee's merchants, so an RV park for snowbirds will give our winter economy a much needed boost. Camp Riff will be landscaped using the county's approved vegetation list to enhance wildlife habitat, so the camp will become a popular wildlife viewing area. The former golf course used about fifty-one million gallons of water per year, but only benefited a small group of golfers. This camp will use a fraction of that amount of water, but will benefit thousands of people each year. The two existing ponds will be lined to stop leakage and become recreational fishing ponds. This land would still be a golf course if it was, if it was ever used enough to be profitable and support all the staff required to run a golf course. So what will it become? I'd say if I was a neighbor, I'd choose a campground over all other feasible uses for this property. I'd choose a campground that will create jobs and put those people back to work. This developer has submitted a great plan that will benefit all of Cochise County. He's also agreed to all seven of the additional design conditions requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So Camp Riff will completely conform to the existing Naco Area Master Development Plan. Please support Cochise County by supporting this land use and construct the much needed Camp Riff in Naco. Thank you.
The next speaker is Janelle McCrery. Your name and address first, and then you may speak three minutes.
Yes, I'm Janelle McCrery. I live at three six oh five South Towner Avenue. The Camp Riff Master Plan was approved by a very small margin and I have some things that I would like to bring up that I think were not brought up at that meeting. First of all, a petition that was signed at the meet and greet with some twenty-five to thirty names in favor of Camp Riff was not done quite legitimately, in my opinion. T-shirts were given out free and the people who got the T-shirts were asked to sign this sheet of paper. One person to whom I spoke refused to sign it because they read the bottom of the page and that said, if you sign this paper, you approve Camp Riff. Water was asked about. Yes, the RV park will take less water than the golf course did. However, it was not brought up that the golf course did not irrigate using the Naco water system. They had two wells and they used reclaimed water from the Bisbee Treatment Plant. Sewer. The Naco Sanitation District says they have plenty of room and they say that Camp Riff will help and their treatment center, but to my knowledge, Naco does not have a treatment center. They have four ponds. Traffic, they were asked about traffic if there was a big event. And told that there would be no problem because most of the people attending the event would be in the campground. This may be true. If there is a big event, what about the traffic prior to the event, everybody trying to get in, get registered and get set up before? Newell Avenue and Towner Avenue will definitely be impacted by an RV park. The people across the street on Towner will see nothing but RVs. The people on Newell will see nothing but RVs and the houses that abut the golf course that have been there since early nineteen sixty-five.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Camp Riff is a very bad idea from what I can see. The economic impacts, and I have a lot to go through, so I'm going to move quickly. The economic impacts of Camp Riff and Cochise County, Arizona, per the Bisbee Venture One LLC owned by Sunny Tempe Investments LLC, which is owned by Joseph Lewis, the developer, the same person that tried to develop the old high school in Bisbee, which is now in limbo. I don't know where it's going to go, but anyway. It projects annual guests at phase one at seventy thousand roughly, phase two at a hundred and eleven thousand, phase three at two hundred and six thousand, phase four at three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven guests at Camp Riff over the course of a year. That's three times the population of Cochise County practically. As of the twenty twenty census, Cochise County had a population of one hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and forty-seven people. County does not have the road infrastructure to support this amount of traffic. Recent article on the Arizona Daily Star said it costs a hundred and seventy-one million dollars for a makeover, just a makeover of four miles of I-ten in Tucson. Assume ten percent of that or seventeen point one million for six miles of Naco Highway, one mile of Newell Road and five miles of Wilson Road together to make them into four lane roads. And you're going to have to pull out, have to pull outs for RVs, they're big vehicles. They block roads. Somebody breaks down, it's going to be a big problem. There's going to be a maintenance cost per mile for each year, each, per mile each year for approximately a hundred and eight thousand dollars annually and major repairs every five to seven years, also in the millions of dollars. That is, of course, to convert to four lane roads, turnouts, break down lanes to prevent traffic jams and snarling. Motorhomes and RVs break down, of course, and they are bigger, need more room and, and room for tow trucks. The projected thirty-three point five million dollars in Cochise County, which is again set forth in that economic impact, is a pipe dream. Assume that Cochise County got just ten percent of that, a three point three five million dollars a year. That's not enough to justify the infrastructure that Cochise County taxpayers would need to invest. The environmental, environmental impacts also play a role. There's been no study done, no expert opinions, no expert consultations, but expect impacts to noise, not only from campers, but concerts and the constant vehicles going around on these highways or roads around Camp Riff. The lights are going to be necessary for safety and each camper will probably have lights as well. That'll affect the ability to enjoy nighttime skies. You might as well live in Phoenix. Light pollution is, is a big deal. The effects on the water aquifer in, in Naco from oil, gas, black water.
You turn these up. Our next speaker is Tricia Geradet on teams.
Good morning again, supervisor. Tricia Geradet, Sierra Vista. Um, first off, I note that there are a couple of uses in the county record saying it's green brush draw and it should be green bush draw. Been confusion on that over the years and I'd like to keep cleaning that up if we can. It should be just green bush draw. Um, on the components that identify using native vegetation, but then perhaps some new drought tolerant vegetation. I ask that any non-natives that are used, they should also be identified as non-invasive. There are some non-native plants that can become quite a problem. So I hope you, we can ask for a non-invasive if they're non-native. If you have questions and concerns about the sanitary sewer situation. I read the Kim Lee Horn report and there's an average daily flow computed for this proposal, but has a peaking factor. But I'm not sure how the peaking factor works into the average flow and the, what might be very non-average use on more than average peaking. With big events, there could be quite a bit of water demand and therefore a lot of sewer use. And I wanted to make sure that we feel quite comfortable with the highest use that could occur. I noticed that Naco Sanitary District said they would accept a four-inch line connection, but Kim Lee Horn is recommending an eight-inch sewer line to meet the demands of this proposal. That's quite a big discrepancy and so I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Next I have Bruce Keenley.
Hi, my name is Bruce Keenley. I own the RV park across from this proposed development. We're trying to get all this in. A, a performance bond, everyone thinks that, given the fact he hasn't completed this school downtown, in fact, he's left it sitting because he doesn't have funding. He should have a performance bond on anything to do with this project if it's approved. We're worried about medical access because again, traffic up and down that road will be incredible. Again, he's proposing, he's, he's proposing or projecting over three hundred and fifty thousand people a year are going to be visiting Camp Riff. That means there's over a thousand people a day. If you toss out the days that it snows and rains and it's too cold to do anything, we're close to two thousand people a day coming up and down those roads according to his projections. And I think you've also seen some really good economic studies about what he's protected in millions of dollars. That's from an economic firm. However, the economic firm used Mr. Lewis's numbers. He provided the numbers to the economic firm that they used to make the projections. And that just kind of doesn't sound right to me. Security is a huge issue. People going to concerts are going to wander off the property and into Naco. I have a friend who used to be a policeman in Indiana and he told me that when they would have concerts, the crime rate around the area of concerts like this would go up dramatically. What kind of facilities is he going to have to start? You know, everybody thinks he's making a campground where you can drive a hundred thousand dollar or five hundred thousand dollar camper into the park and hook up to electric and sewer, but that's not what he's proposing. He's proposing dry camping, which means if you drive your camper in there, maybe, or maybe you have a tent, you don't have any electricity, you don't have any water, no, what am I forgetting? Sewer, sewer is hugely important. People will dump their sewage tanks on the ground and that water will go directly into the green bush draw and the green bush draw goes directly into the San Pedro River. And we don't have any kind of environmental impact studies, studies about the impact and what this is going to do to the county. I also wanted to talk about something that happened at the last meeting. I have a piece of paper here. It's from the sanitation district's last meeting and they talked about, I can't, I want to have my glasses, I can't read the exact words, but they proposed to Mr. Lewis having access to sewage facilities. And after that thinking is given, then they're going to cut off the access to the sewer system.
The next person is Kathleen, you can, your glasses are hanging around your neck.
My name is Kathleen Buchanan. I live at fourteen thirty-five South Peaceful Lane in Bisbee. Thank you for letting me speak today, Chair, Chairman. I'm, I am just, I'm not going to repeat a lot of things because we don't have time, but just the other day, the new story, CBD store had a fifty percent sale and we had two major car accidents on Naco Highway and one on ninety-two just because that tiny place had a sale. So I think the traffic impact is much greater than what everyone is making off. I'm not here to be harsh about anything because I also am trying to develop a tiny home affordable housing project on Naco Highway. And I think that's a project that the community really needs. My husband, David went to high school here. He worked in the mine here. He, when he opened some businesses, he moved to Sierra Vista where they had more of a community to support the businesses that he developed, which were car dealerships. community to support the businesses that he developed, which were car dealerships. And then he sold the businesses there and moved up to Phoenix. And so I think what we need in this town where everybody moved is peaceful, low-impact living, and that's what we moved here for. I think it would be great if we had affordable housing for families, and we had more children in this community, and a way for families to make money and support themselves without relying on downtown Old Bisbee and trying to get there and pay someone to have the, you know, the ability to work for them. But we need to branch out and create some housing that is affordable for families, and create some new jobs that are not in Old Bisbee. I think that dry camping is a misnomer, because they may be dry camping, but they're going to have showers, and they're going to have water filling stations, and that's going to come from Camp Riff. And it's just like anywhere else you go, even though you're in an RV that's self-sustainable, they're not going to take showers and use their own bathroom when they're on the property. So there will be a lot more usage of the facilities than what everyone is trying to make off. And I think, you know, we're trying to remain a small community, but a thriving community, which hasn't happened. It's not grown in years, and I think we want to make the right decisions to, to grow this community, but not in transient and more tourist-type activity. We'd like to be able to create permanent housing for residents to live here, and educational things for families and children to have a more balanced community.
Your time is up. Thank you. The next person is Jennifer Schmidt.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Schmidt, but I would like to keep my address off the public record. I'm part of the Address Confidentiality Program by the state of Arizona, so.
You're resident of Cochise County.
Yes, I am. So with that, I am opposed to the RV park that is planned right now. I was here at the last meeting, and I listened to a lot of, of what was said, and so a, a big predictor of, of future behaviors is past behaviors. So citing that he will be a good neighbor and wants to do things to protect the community, if we look at what he has done to the high school and what has happened there, that is not community relations. That is just an eyesore and a bunch of things left behind on a project that has been left uncomplete. So if you think about a thirty-eight million dollar project over five years, that's a hard thing to see it going all the way through. So imagine all of that stuff left behind, the construction, the potentiality for a big disaster that then everybody living there has to see is quite high. I think about the five-year projected construction time, and I hear this beep, 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 for years. So when I think about the law of ethics, the good of one or the good of the few shall not be put in front of the good of the many. Also, when I think about the liquor license that he got stating that he would open the bar restaurant, that bar restaurant has not happened. I haven't seen any activity in the way of trying to get that to happen on the property. So it's kind of like he buys properties, gets them rezoned, applies for things under one potentiality, what he presents, and then a thing that, that's not what happened. It winds up becoming something completely different. He said he wanted to present affordable housing for the community, so reaching us as a community, but then turned it into the potentiality of a boutique motel. So when I looked at the renderings, I looked at how many rooms were for the boutique motel versus the affordable housing. And the boutique hotel had way more allotment set aside in that rendering. So if this is not completed, it will be an eyesore. And, yeah.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
I have two other people who did not wish to speak, but wanted to support this program. And I have two people who are opposed and did not wish to speak, so they will be added to the program. Those are all the people that I have noticed ahead of times. There's someone in the audience who wishes to. You may have three minutes. If you have any remaining addresses.
Hi, my name is Tom Pantellas. I live at thirty thirty-three Avenue de Suenos in Sierra Vista. I used to live in Bisbee. I actually lived on a golf course for a little while with another gentleman. We were sort of doing basic maintenance after it was closed. And I know the property well. I know the golf business pretty well. I work over Pueblo del Sol now. And I speak to the higher-ups. They lose money every year. Golf courses are tremendously expensive, but there's deep pockets. Their castle and cook owns the property. They keep it running with the hopes for future development, housing, et cetera. So when this course closed, I love golf, and it was sad, but that was reality. It just wasn't sustainable. So this plan now is going to take a lot of work and effort. I've worked for and with Joseph since twenty nineteen, I would say. And the man gets things done. I know there's a high school project that is in limbo. I just came from there doing some basic, you know, property maintenance, and I've been doing some when I'm not working at Sierra Vista over on the golf course. But I've also worked on other projects with Joseph. The Bisbee Social Club took absolutely nothing, a lot of hard work, and it is now a very enjoyable, unique place, and I see the potential for this to happen. You know, he wanted to maintain nine holes originally and develop support. Well, the community shot it down. Had they not done that, potentially, I'd still be there. There would be some golf. The, the restaurant was a great place to hang out, and it will be again. But you've got to, you know, go in a different direction than golf, and I don't see thousands of people in and out of Naco. Yes, there may be an event or two where you will have that, and you will have to be ready for it, but in general, it's going to be a little bit more of a mellow experience, and the property will be pretty once again. I mean, I'm out there getting some of the mowing done now, and it's fun, just to get it back to what it kind of looked like. Can't be a golf course unless somebody, you know, hits a magic switch and you have thousands of golfers show up and support it, but that's, that's not happening. Golf is a tough business, so I would like to see this go forward very much.
I think I saw another team in the audience.
Madam Chair, I just want to remind you that the petitioner would like to speak as well.
Yes.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sabrina Dietz. I live at forty-eight Old Douglas Road, right here in Bisbee. And I'm a full-time, or I was a full-time RVer for four years, and I've been a full-time musician for fifteen years. And I've also lived all around the south, from Live Oak, Florida, which has the Swanee Music Park, its music grounds. And it's kind of very similar to what just Joseph's wanting to do out there. The most interesting thing is they have hundreds of thousands of people that come through every year. But the town is still this sleepy little town. They didn't have to make four lanes for people to come in and out. Music parks are really self-contained, too, so the little bit of people that do leave the grounds during a music event, they just kind of support the town around, but it's, it's really rare. And somebody was talking about RVers that just dump their tanks at random. Four years of living around RVers and many different RV parks, that is very rare and unheard of, even in dry camping situations, because always down the road, there are places that you can dump. There's public parks that have access for sewer lines and stuff like that. So I also want to speak as a person that came from a very small town, Reed Spring, Missouri, that had about thirteen hundred people living in that town, and it had a really cute downtown area, and it was, it would just push away anybody that wanted to come in and help develop just the cuteness and, and having little events. And everybody that would push it away made its worth. That town now has one tiny little building that is not maintained. The kids have nothing to do, all, like, I have friends that died from meth addiction, because there's nothing for kids to do. And that's another thing that this would provide, is a place for people to go and experience music, and, and for people that aren't really a part of music. It's not all about drinking and drugs and alcohol. It's about togetherness. And the more that you have people that allow kids and younger generations to see that it's not just about partying, it's about community, and it's about taking care of the land around you. That, I would suggest anybody that really assumes that these types of parks trash the land, I would look into Live Oak, Florida, because it really is a sleepy little town. The park's called Swanee Music Park, and they have, like I said, it really do have hundreds of thousands of people in and out, and it's just that it, the town thrives, and the town loves it, and even my, my partner has family that works the park, and they live in the town for decades. And it just really helps the community. It helps the kids have something to do, and I really think it could help everything in the area. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, please come forward so that we can get this on, on the way. Stand in line if you must. It's three minutes for each one of you.
My name is Rosalina, and my address is twenty-one oh five West Hogan Street in Naco, Arizona, eighty-five, sixty-one. I have been a resident of Naco for years, and I've never seen anyone open a business in Naco before. Economically, this project is going to bring jobs and revenues in Naco. Joseph Lewis is the first person to try this venture and opportunities for the community to have more jobs locally. I think you guys should go and do that, because we've never had a park before in Naco. I mean, I've lived there for like thirty years in Naco, and I've never seen anything, you know, going through. And I think this is going to be something good for our kids, for our grandkids, you know. So I really think you should consider this as our future for our kids and stuff like that. So I have to say, by doing this, you give more opportunities for, for jobs in, in Naco. So we just, not a lot of people have vehicles like, you know, to go to Bisbee, which does all the jobs that we have to go to Bisbee and stuff like that. So I think it would be a great idea. Thank you.
Anyone else, or I call the end.
Good morning. This is for the resolution number eleven on Camp Riff. And my name is Tamara Birch. I live in Bisbee, Arizona, off of Naco Highway. And I've lived here off and on mostly since nineteen eighty. So I just, my concern is, you know, I'm for anything. I'll give tax money to public education, making us a healthier community. I'm just worried with Joe Lewis's history at the historic building of the high school, which is approved by the county supervisors. There was no completion bond. If he has this idea for Camp Riff, I'm worried about the environmental issues. I'm worried about he's not going to complete it. This is another historical site that is, in my mind, wrecked. I don't know about water, sewage, all these things. How is this directly going to benefit the people of Naco? I mean, maybe Camp, Camp Naco gave me tourists for Buffalo Soldiers and an educational center. That's great, and more plants. And like Tricia Garrides had made sure that then, if they're not needed, that they're not invasive. I just am concerned basically of who's actually going to benefit this, because I see Joe Lewis's investments as not benefiting anyone but a certain small group of people. Thank you.
Okay, the applicant for this project is Savannah McDonald. She's here today, which I had to speak. I will give you five minutes instead of just the three minutes.
Why don't you talk for five minutes? I'll be available for questions about the plan. I'm the architect, so I can talk about it. It's two, five minutes Joe's going to talk about.
It, it's a big project. I, I agree, and.
Your name, please?
My name's, I'm sorry, my name's Joseph Lewis, sixty-seven Main Street, Bisbee. It's, it's, it's a big project. We would have a big impact, both on jobs, which are important. I know there's a diversity of people out there that some retire that aren't as, you know, jobs isn't important to them as some of the people that are in the working class, but it is, but with a big impact. I, I think we put together as a team, and I'm proud to have the same team that's working on the Camp Naco project. It's working on this project, too. There's a lot of synergy in that regard. The lifeblood of Bisbee is tourism, whether we like it or not. It, it's the economic driver. And to some degree, I would agree with, I would say that, not as much so, but in Sierra Vista. And I think this could have a really positive impact on both, as the numbers point out in Bisbee, and, and Naco. I don't want to address the other projects, but I'd be glad anyone wants to call me to give you the other side of the story. My number's public. There's always two sides to every story. Anyway, I'm, I did have the, the property on the market for two years and did not get one by it. It's, there's not a lot of developers out there that want to take on a project, whatever that project may be, in Naco, and I believe in it, and and believe obviously that it'll give very positive impact on both the community, and we will continue to strive to be a good neighbor. We've made some changes, for example, the buffer between the neighborhood and the project. We increased by double or triple what was, would have been required of the zoning code with a walking path. A lot of amenities that the people in Naco can use, such as you mentioned earlier, the playground. Hopefully someday, we'll have a swing pool as part of it, maybe even some pickleball courts, some other amenities that they just, Naco doesn't, Naco doesn't even have a playground right now for the kids. Fifty percent of the population is under eighteen. Anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
So I mean, just architecturally, sorry, Savannah McDonald, three seventeen North Court Avenue in Tucson, Arizona. I, I think it's just kind of going back to the amenities, you know, making it not just about the tourists, but also very importantly about the community and providing this as a community asset. So we come up with things like community garden and, and dog park and things like that. But I, I think this is just the beginning of the vision, and we kind of put down everything we think would be great, but we are community partners and, and want to take care of our neighbors. We want to mitigate. We know there will be sound issues and things like that. We want to mitigate that as much as possible. And then just kind of going back to the overall vision being single, single-story development, really preserving those views and making landscape a priority.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any board members have any questions of the developer before we go on?
I have comments in general, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay, so we talked about sewage and wastewater disposal and the term dry camping, and no provision for sewer dumps for RVs, but they also said the Naco Sanitary District, which was going to serve the project, was okay with the project. We need jobs. I think everybody understands that. If the golf business could make it, we wouldn't be talking about a new business. One speaker mentioned the terms small and thriving, which I find to be almost mutually exclusive. Success of any venture like this is going to depend on population, and I believe that we have room for tourists. With regard to Mr. Lewis and his rights to, to have a business, run a business, and do business ventures, in my opinion, there are no group rights without individual rights. And as usual, those who are specifically against the prospect of Mr. Lewis's development could have bought the property themselves and done whatever they wanted to it, including letting, letting it sit if that's what they wanted to do. So regard to any potential problems. So uh, regard to any potential problems, people doing illegal activity, that is not. That's not specifically up to the petitioner to, to do law enforcement. And in general, this petitioner or any business will have to clean up his own mess if he makes a mess. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Ms. Judd.
So I, I realize you're building a lot of um. Infrastructure that caters to the community and I, and I was wondering. If there's gonna ever be, well, if you, yeah, if you could come forward, please. If there's ever gonna be anything. Besides maybe the musical events and the RV park that you would charge admission for. So.
There's no plans now to charge admission. I mean, definitely wouldn't charge admission and build a playground and all. I, I want. In the walking paths, for example, I would love the community to be able to, to use those. I, you know, it's.
So there would never be like, I, I just think that's a sticking point because in that community there.
Of course.
Isn't a lot of money, especially for those.
Oh, right, right, right. That, that, yeah. And if we could build a pool, it would be known. It'd be access, public access as well too.
Pools are expensive and I think a couple of dollars to get in would be okay for the pool.
Can I address one other comment about the, the, there are dump, we have dump stations planned in the project.
Okay.
Um, that's, we would not do dry camping without dump stations as part of the project.
Okay, that was it. I didn't have anything else right now.
Hey, you know, I've um. Looked at this issue and I, I understand that change is hard, you know, good change, bad change, change is hard on everybody. Hard to accept as it's the unknown. And um. And I think our, our. Planning department always looks to see. How are you gonna follow the rules? Because the rules are the rules that are set. And so it isn't totally up to the three of us to just. Uh, grab an idea and say, well, I think we ought to do this. You know, we need to follow the rules that have already been set. And. As you heard from uh, Mr. Taylor. When you look at the, the rules for uh, the docket and changing the um. Changing the zoning. It appears as though the rules have been met. And so, um. I don't understand um. What you would want a performance bond on because that's been mentioned a couple of times. Would you, Ms. Taylor, would you comment on that? Where do these people feel that a? Performance bond in addition to all this would be appropriate?
Uh, Madam Chair Supervisors, um. I don't really feel that I'm qualified to answer a question that way. Um. I would defer to the county attorney's office in terms of the legal issues as far as those types of public agreements.
Well, people were asking that and I thought that's not part of our criteria.
That is not part of our criteria. That's not something that we would ordinarily spend a lot of time uh, generating analysis for.
Right. Okay, um, the next thing is there are two issues here. The docket, the master plan development. And um. Um, RZ twenty-four oh five. So is that gonna require two votes? That two separate issues?
Uh, Madam Chair, it is. The PD zoning is contingent on approval of the NDP.
But Madam Chair, it's the, it's just one provision. So. It's all included in there. So you don't, there's no two separate votes. It's a motion, a second, just the approval will take care of both.
We don't have to change what our motion was.
No.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that people understood that there were two separate issues here, the plan development and the zoning change. And, and they met all the criteria for, for all of them. Okay, I'm, I believe I've allowed the, the public time to decide if they wanted to um. Talk to us about this issue. And so I'm going to close the public hearing. I think that the, the board has um. As much information as they have asked for, um.
One more thing. Okay, I, I just want to say I, it's a small community and I know you realize that. And you don't need to come forward. I just want to, to let you know that that's one of my biggest complaints. As when there's heavy equipment and things going on on Sundays and in the evenings and early, early in the morning. And I realize that's part of construction, but um. Sometimes there's quieter activities that can be done at that time. Sundays usually are what they complain about when there's a lot of heavy equipment. Moving on Sunday that, that kind of upsets people. They like, we need that day. You do too. I know you do. So thank you.
Well, and, and Naco has. People who live there have suffered through the border wall, you know, but uh, construction. People coming and going does, does cause change to take place. Uh, do you have any other comments?
Yes, indeed. Uh, with regard to a bond or a performance got bond, we have talked about a bond in the, the possibility of. Potential remaining either toxic waste or some kind of uh, re- remaining mess, mess after the expiration of the project. From time to time, and that was something that the development department kind of set the standard for and probably got ahead of a, a lot of other communities. But I don't see that. As applicable in this case. And that's all I have to say about a bond.
Thank you. Well, um, my comments are, um. People who own property have the right to develop it within the scope that has been set by the county. And so we have rules and regulations of what they go through. If I were living next to this. I would have perhaps a different uh feeling or not. Because I think a lot of the. Conversation I heard today was um. About the people who are the person who owns the property and prior performance. And today we're looking at the issue of Camp Riff. Not any other projects. And we're looking at all the criteria that needs to be put in front of us. Doesn't mean that he's gonna be successful or unsuccessful, but he. Seems to have gone through all of the uh, criteria that was required of him. And is willing to perform that. And so it is going to be um. My thought that we need to give him that opportunity. To do what is required in order to have a successful project. Or his project will fail. And so all we can do is make sure that they go through the criteria. And it seems as though he has done. Having said that, I, I, we do have a motion and a second. On the floor, so I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. And now we move on to the action items. And. We had Dr. Rotweiler uh, here earlier, but we do need to approve this proclamation so that we can generate uh, signatures. So.
Let's just wait till the room clears.
Whose turn is it to motion, Madam Judd?
Well, uh, we're, we're waiting for the people to leave that we're talking about the Camp Riff.
Go ahead, Mr. Crosby.
Okay. Approve a proclamation to declare April twenty-twenty-four as Community College Month in Cochise County to celebrate the contributions. Community colleges making the shaping uh, the future of Arizona and its economy through high quality education and workforce training.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments before I call for the vote? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Uh, next, um, with the county sheriff, I'd like to have a motion on Resolution twenty-four oh seven.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-four oh seven, accepting two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And any future disbursements from the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission, ACJC. For disbursement to local law enforcement agencies participating in the Cochise County Critical Investigation Response Team, or CERT. As described in Exhibit A effective April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. Um, I'll go kind of quick. I know it's been a long meeting. So in uh, twenty-twenty-two, the, the state. Um, establish a major incident division for DPS and they provided some funding for them. It's a new division. Um, part of that uh, funding was allocated um, to go to the counties or other regional. Task forces that are assigned with the same mission. The, the mission of the major incident division. Was to investigate other agencies, significant uses of force. So that a law enforcement agency like the sheriff's office, if one of our deputies was involved in the use of force, we would investigate our own stuff. Um, we would have an outside agency to do that. Um. Luckily, the sheriff's office had, had already implemented that in twenty-eighteen, so we were well positioned. Um, as one of these regional task force. So um, the money that flowed through DPS. About six hundred thousand dollars was allocated to go to other regional task force. Us being one of them. Um, and they've allocated a hundred twenty thousand dollars in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. And another hundred twenty thousand dollars in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Uh, the resolution is asking the board to accept these funds. Uh, because they were pass-through funds, the, the state didn't provide us any IGA or MOU. Uh, which they typically do. And although I asked them many times to give me something, um, they, they really didn't. So um. The county attorney's office came up with this resolution as a mechanism for us to accept the money and use it. Um, if you allow us to use that, the, those funds um, as a task force, um, I've uh. Spoken on every other law enforcement agency in the county. Uh, and we've entered an agreement on how to use that, those funds and disperse them equitably. Uh, the sheriff's office, uh, we're the fiduciary of it and we have a, a mechanism to, to get that funding. Uh, to the other agencies. We're, I'm still working with uh, finance to, to finalize those mechanisms. Uh, but that's the intent of the funds is to provide training and other opportunities to develop. Um, our professionalism so that when we do investigate significant uses of force. Uh, by law enforcement, everybody on the team is well-trained and, and well-equipped to do that professionally.
Sounds like a good project. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, I don't have anything.
That also, I agree with the chair that that sounds like a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, there's no other questions or comments. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Uh, next, emergency services. Let's have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero seven, accepting. Oh, I think I'm on the wrong one. Number fourteen, approve the transfer of Area Ray Pro Rapid Deployment Kit. Equipment from Cochise County Emergency Services to the City of Tucson Fire Department. Per the terms of the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality Grant HMHMP dash zero five eight three dash one six. Zero one dash HMEP.
I'll second it.
We have a, a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Duchon.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you. Um, requesting to transfer this piece of equipment from Cochise County to the Tucson Fire Department. Uh, the Area Ray kit is comprised of four chemical sensors which link together to establish a perimeter for chemical detections. Uh, can detect various chemicals, uh, with different sensor attachments and it can be used for large public events or. Large-scale hazmat spills. The equipment was purchased by Cochise County in twenty-twenty with a grant from ADQ. Uh, and it's not been fully utilized here locally. Uh, Tucson Fire Department has more trained hazmat technicians, more uses for it, more public events. And could be better utilized there. However, uh, the equipment could also be brought back to Cochise County used here if we had a need. Uh, in fact, next month, if the Boeing Starliner does land in Wilcox, we would. Work with Tucson Fire to use that piece of equipment back here as needed.
Thank you. We're trained to use the piece of equipment.
Uh, some hazmat technicians in the county, within the fire departments in Cochise County are trained on it.
Just wanted to make sure we're trained to use the equipment.
Yes, and that was part of the challenge. Uh, writ large, we have a lack of uh. Trained technicians for this specific type of equipment.
Right. Well, that, that was my concern. Um, Tom, do you have any questions or comments?
No, Madam Chair.
He did?
I don't either. Well, comment, the Boeing Starliner. Yay, possibly. Possibly yay. Okay. I don't have any on this though. And, and wouldn't they send technicians if it, if it was a problem? You know, with us to have a tech technician accessible? But this.
Yeah, so fire departments in Cochise County could check the equipment back out from Tucson Fire or Tucson Fire could also come.
And implement the, the program.
Yes, come with the equipment.
Okay.
With an IGA or something.
Hmm.
Ev- everything has to have. Those kinds of links so that it makes it um.
If it's an emergency though, is there a way to expedite an IGA if that need, if we needed it?
Yeah, so to answer both questions in an emergency, uh, it would be considered mutual aid. And the board recently passed the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact, so we could use that as a legal mechanism. Uh, and an example with uh, a pre-arranged agreement is. What the, what Boeing is using with the city of Tucson. Uh, for an IGA to specifically have Tucson Fire and their equipment come assist Boeing.
Okay. All right.
The door has been taken here.
Yay.
All right, you hear the comments, we're calling for the vote. If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, um. Let's have a motion for proposal twenty-four oh one dash two six zero six zero.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve proposal twenty-four oh one dash two six zero six zero. With Buffalo Mechanical and Controls LLC under cooperative contract. Mojave nineteen F dash PMAC two dash zero nine zero four. For the replacement of thirteen heating ventilation and air conditioning HVAC units. At two zero three North Judd Drive in Bisbee, Arizona, Cochise County Jail. And the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-two. Dollars and forty-six cents effective April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, Mr. Crowley.
Good morning, how are you? Um, no, this is, this is part of the, the continuing plan of trying to bring all of our HVAC systems. Into uh, the twenty-first century. The, these are pretty old and have been worked very, very difficult. Um. We uh, we just really can't go very much longer on the systems that we have. My, my staff is. At wit's end trying to keep these things on. So it, it's really the only thing we can do is just replace.
There have been instances in hot weather. It's, it's hot, it's humid and um. The jail staff has a hard time containing the inmates when they're hot, hungry or angry. It's our goal to keep them cool. Yes. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Crowley?
No.
No, ma'am.
Call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and approved.
Cool, thank you.
All right, um, state and federal legislation, the um. Legislature is kind of taking a hiatus and not doing much. Um, everything that I have gotten, you have gotten. You have any questions? I'm sure that you would bring them up, comments. Having said that, you know, moving on to the report by Mr. Perwitz, President of County Administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisor Judd, Supervisor Crosby. So a couple items uh, to mention. One. On May third. At the Cochise County Douglas Campus, uh, Cochise County Healthcare Workforce. Community Forum will take place. So that's something to be noted. Uh, this is a gathering of healthcare professionals and stakeholders to identify, identify workforce solutions in Cochise County. And sorry, registration is required in advance and that could be at. Uh, you, you can email our uh, health director. Um, E. Lang, Barbara Lang. And so it's B. Lang at Cochise dot AZ dot gov. Just wanted to make sure that that's where we want to send people. Uh, also, um. This past. Sorry, time is flying. I don't know exactly what date it was, um, but ADOT. Uh, awarded the AZ Smart. Grant to Cochise County, four point four million dollars that will be coming up to the board for approval. Uh, that is for the design of the port of entry connection road. Um. And last but not least, um. There he is. Mr. Juan Frisby is present, uh, and he once again received. received an award for distinguished budget presentation for FY twenty-three from GFOA. So thank you, Juan, for all your hard work and continued dedication to the county.
Congratulations. We lack a balanced budget and, and our finances to be correct. Thank you. All right, summary of current events. Supervisor District One?
I will pass, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I will pass. District Two, District Three?
Nothing this time.
Nothing in Wilcox?
I know. Well, we have junior rodeo going on right now. The next one is the fourth and fifth. That's everybody.
Having said that and giving people an opportunity, our next meeting is today at one o'clock in the Board of Supervisors Association for the Cochise County Jail District Board of Directors' workstation. So this meeting is adjourned.